I call the Des Moines City Council meeting for September 14th to order. And before we get going really quick, we're going to pull a couple of chairs out of there. If I could get some assistance, Kyle, could you help us pull those out for a couple of the folks that are looking for a seat? That should do the, that should take care of it. Thank you very much. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, with that, Councilmember Harris, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record reflect that there are six council members present. Councilmember Oxger contacted me and he's not able to attend to have a motion to excuse.
So moved.
By Councilmember Nutting and seconded by Councilmember Steinmetz. All those in favor? Motion passes six zero. All right, I'm going to take a presiding officer privilege right at the moment. I've asked the new leader of Destination Des Moines, Justin Talon, to come and speak for a few minutes before we begin the rest of the meeting. Sir, if you come to the podium, you have the floor.
All right, howdy. My name is Justin Talon. I'm a professor at Highline College and Central Washington Des Moines. I oversee hospitality and tourism. And so naturally, when I moved to the community, I was looking for a spot to leverage what I care about most, which is about event planning. And so I've fallen into a role here where I'm interim president of Destination Des Moines. And as I have learned, that there is a long history behind Destination Des Moines. So I decided it would be a very wise thing to make sure I come in and speak to all of you about what I am trying to do and trying to accomplish for the betterment of the community.
Point of order, is my con? You project very well, but.
Thank you. I better. It's my job, right? I'm wishing I had a PowerPoint. And how do you stay under five minutes when you're used to two hour lectures? But what I'm looking to do here in the community is make it a better place to live, work, and play. For the 15 years that I've been working in destination marketing organizations, whether I'm in Corpus Christi, Austin, Texas, Toronto, Ontario, the things that I'm always trying to do is put on community events for economic development that are also going to be things that everybody in the community has access to, so that you're working with all populations with the diversity of it. You're working with collaboration with other nonprofits, other organizations, and you have partners. So we're going to be doing all of that here in what Destination Des Moines has coming in the future. I'm not saying it has or has not happened in the past. I don't really know. I joined Destination Des Moines during COVID. And as we come out of it, I'm looking to do some really cool things with it. So I got introduced to it through Waterland Parade and through the Christmas tree lighting and through Halloween. And now as president, I hope to continue those, but I really want more community involvement. I want to make sure everybody gets out there and sees it and everybody knows what my purpose is. Because as I've talked to people about Destination Des Moines, going through the community, including a few council members, some of you here in the audience, I keep being told the same thing, which is, do you know the history? And I'm like, not really. But why does that matter if you're all on the same page and trying to accomplish the same things? So you're going to see a lot of marketing coming out. You're going to see Google Forms, signups. There's going to be things where we're trying to reach out to you through Facebook, Instagram, things we do at the college, all trying to reach you, trying to say, these events are going on in the community. Do you want your organization to be marketed as a part of it? Do you want to volunteer? Do you want to get your name out there? And how can we make it better? I'm a data-driven person. When you do a PhD in destination marketing and events, you end up becoming that. So I'm very much into collecting surveys and over the years, always improving every single time. It's just a natural progression. So whatever used to happen, I don't really know. But that's what I wanted to come here and say is that when you see DDM going forward, it's in alignment with Central Washington University. It's in alignment with Highline College. It's all of our students who are working and planning these events that live right here in the community. A lot of your neighbors are my event planning students at Central Washington and at Highline College. And those are the ones planning the events. Those are the ones putting on the events. And that's what we're doing with, as we move forward. So that's what I had to say. I kept it under five minutes instead of giving you an event planning lecture with a lot of numbers. So I'm used to saying any questions now. Not sure how that goes.
Well, in this particular case, it wouldn't be. The other, the other thing that was in speaking with the city manager is that, that they, you would coordinate with him for like a meeting to speak about the events and, and, and some of the resources and so forth and needs and kind of accountability.
My background is very much strategic planning. It's not the physical operations all the time. I mean, it used to be when I was a, you know, an event planner at Hilton. But these days, it's very the strategic side. You have to be, the events need to be a part of something larger. They can't be standalone. Every single event has to be a part of a larger goal that the community is trying to reach. And so, yeah, I know that Michael Mathias is the one who is the city manager, and I should definitely be meeting with you to figure out. It's your vision and the council's vision that we're trying to support. I'm not creating a vision for the city. I'm trying to support.
Look forward to it.
Yeah. So hopefully, we can do that.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming in.
My pleasure. Thanks for having me.
All right. Are there any correspondence?
No, Mayor.
Okay. It'll now be time for public comment. I would like to just remind those participants that any person making personal impertinent or slanderous remarks, become boisterous, threatening, or personally abusive while addressing the council will be removed from the meeting. And you have three minutes to speak. And the only one we have signed up tonight is Mr. Bill Linscott.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, city manager, everybody else that's here tonight. I'm actually circling back on the public hearing that we had last, last meeting. And I'm really disappointed that we didn't have that soundproofing ordinance. And I know that it's kind of like the trains left the station. And yet, I do sense that there, that, that subject will continue to be covered. But it causes me to think about some of these things we've done before. I think that, that not occurring at the same time is going to create some implications for people that want to sell properties and developers until, you know, the ordinance is in place. And it doesn't seem like the ordinance should be such a heavy lift. But it caused me to think about some of the other things that we've done where, you know, we just have missed some opportunities to get some things done together with projects. Example, the gates, the market, the parking gates down at the Marina. Jeez, we had this big project going on in the North End. During that whole time period, those gates weren't working. And they weren't working for reasons of construction, but mainly, they were inoperable. They just weren't reliable. And we had a chance to make the very last task of that project, the installation of the gates. And we had plenty of time during the construction period to look at selection of good quality equipment that we needed. And we missed it. And so I kind of feel like all of us are capable of doing better. The council, the administration, even the public. I feel responsible for that gate. I should have been up before the council saying, let's make sure we have that ready to go on the first day we're done. And with Scott, I should have been putting pressure on him to, you know, we need this done. So I'm not, I'm not criticizing anyone in particular, maybe all of us together. But it seems like we continue to get projects that have one piece missing at the end. And we, we can do better. Anyway, thanks for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Linscott. All right. So per council rules, we finally had some council or committee meetings, and we come to the committee chair report. And I'm going to start off with the transportation committee meeting, which I am the chair of. So essentially, in that meeting, we reviewed capital improvement projects and, and so forth, and where we were. We got some updates. Exciting. It looks like some of the Redondo stuff will start next year. The bathrooms in particular, and then later, the, the fishing pier, along with a few other projects, like the 24th Street Project, 24th Avenue will get going and so forth like that. But the big one that we had was, there was, the legislators, legislators created an incentive to add early learning centers, so daycares and so forth, which especially in our economically disadvantaged portions of town, this would be a great asset. So it gave us an opportunity to entertain an idea. And recently, Burien passed one of these similar where they, they actually gave an 80% reduction in traffic impact fees to businesses that were building learning centers, or 80% of that portion of the building. So if they built a, you know, an apartment unit, and there was a portion that was the learning center, then that portion would be, get that 80% applied to that, that, that traffic impact fees. So Deputy Mayor Buxton and I sat on the committee today. And a couple of things we heard were that the traffic impact fees, what's important about them is they fund a lot of our road improvements and road construction, some of those things. So we, we budget off that. So what would this impact that? Would we have to reduce something or something along that? But we both agreed it was good and so forth. So what we did, council, is we actually made these recommendations that we wanted to know what staff felt was the appropriate, if we went forward with this because it would be an ordinance change, what would be the appropriate percentage that we would, that we would allow off, in a reduction off of, of a project like this? Because the, the law doesn't exactly state, it just states that it can be up to 80%. And then also, would there any be any retroactive fees we might have to re-return in existing projects or something like that? And then also, we wanted to know exactly what the list of services, childcare type services were that qualify for this. And with council's permission, this would be something where it'd be an ordinance and go forward to you guys. We just want the kind of general consensus that you're for it, that they go ahead and do that work, and they plan to bring it before council, most likely at the beginning of next year, sometime in that quarter. I'll start with Depp. Then I'll go to you, Councilmember Harris, or Nutting.
A couple, a couple other considerations have, has to do with the, kind of the, the, well, national, but regional pressure, statewide pressure, the, the connectivity between childcare and economic success in a community. And so it, it has a, a long-reaching effect on housing and jobs and travel and ability of people to get, you know, we have emphasized workforce training in this city and even sent some, quite a bit of funding through ARPA for that. But it's all connected with childcare and people's ability to pursue careers or help our economy. So it's all connected. Thank you.
Councilmember Nutting?
Yeah, I just, I'm just in favor and moving that forward and bringing something to the, the council and possibly a presentation on.
So it looks like, it's, what I was looking for is consensus for them to move forward. That's what I see here. Okay. We'll move on. So then I'm going to move to the environmental committee. Councilmember Nutting, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. First order of business, well, second order of business was a source control program update, which is a mandate and that we pull a portion of our businesses to, to make sure that we're doing the best management practices on, on the outfalls, spillage cleanup and, and that kind of stuff. And, and the businesses in town were, I think there was 20 businesses, and, and they were pretty receptive to it and, and looking forward to doing better and have a better understanding of what their catch basin's on site, if, if they're private and they were responsible for the cleanup of those. And, and so I think staff has done a great job of educating them and, and moving forward. I think we'll, we'll, we'll be pretty good. And then I'd like to call, we received a, we, we received an update on the capital improvements plan, but I'd like to call Tyler up to give us a quick briefing on a few points on that.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. Just a brief update here for the public and for the council on a road, upcoming road closure. So part of the Kent Des Moines Road, Barnes Creek Placement Project led by Washdot, starting tomorrow, they're, at 9:00 PM, they're going to close Kent Des Moines Road for nine days. It's going to reopen on Sunday, the 24th at 9:00 PM. There is a signed detour route that will take vehicles down 16th, west on 240th, and then back up on Marine View Drive. Washdot is, Washdot is doing a great job of putting out public notices to residents in the vicinity. They're going to provide access for those within the closure, those homes with, that, that fall within those bounds. And that's what I have to share.
Thank you, Tyler. And that concludes my remarks.
All right. And then I've asked Councilmember Steinmetz to speak about the yesterday's ad hoc franchise meeting.
Yeah, I was at, I attended the ad hoc franchise committee meeting yesterday. And the whole point of the meeting was the amendment to the recology contract that we all knew was coming. This amendment is based upon King County finally setting their rates because of the waste management system. We hire a hauler, a collector and a hauler. They take it to King County. King County Waste Management, then it's the final processor. But we didn't know those rates at the time. And so in the next, I don't know if it's the next meeting or a couple of meetings after that, we'll have a proposal to the whole council to address that amendment. Apparently, there have been a couple of things that have happened that look really good for at least the city of Des Moines. Because we got in and negotiated something early, our rates are going to go up far less than a lot of the other cities that are surrounding the area. And there are 37 cities and unincorporated King County that are all affected by King County finally setting their, their rate structure. But anyway, that's just sort of the basics of what's happened. There's a, a pretty good memo. If you're interested in this kind of stuff, it's dense. There are a lot of acronyms. And there are a lot of, you know, if this, then that sort of leverages in the system. But nonetheless, it's kind of worth understanding exactly what your rates are going for and how much I, I think at least our staff did in getting in early and negotiating their rates. So, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Steinmetz. That, that was a good point. It was the work of our staff being a kind of preemptive strike, you might say, that, that's going to keep our rates a lot cheaper than others. So moving on to the city manager report, Michael, you have the floor.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to say we are so pleased to see our former police chief. But I know we're pleased to see his better half. So we're going to ask Amy if you'd come up and talk about Burning Boat. That'd be great. Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for having us again. I'm Amy Cook Thomas. And this is my partner in planning the Burning Boat Festival.
Hi there. I'm Brad Chaney with South King Fire.
Thank you not only for having us, but also for supporting the festival so generously. Last year, some of you personally supported the festival and also the council supported. So thank you so much. It was a great event. Last year, our goal was to sell 300 tickets and we sold 411, although we know that about 300 max showed up. It was a long event, kind of spread out. But it was a great event. Our goal last year was $30,000. And we collected over $37,000 last year. And we presented a check to Valley Cities for over $22,000, $22,035. And the goal of last year was to support drug abuse treatment and mental health services because we know that those cause a lot of problems in our communities. So that was what we did last year. This year, our goal is a little bit more ambitious. We're trying to sell 500 tickets and raise $40,000 this year. So we will see if that happens. So far, we have promised sponsorships of over $7,000. And we've collected 1,950. But we're a little bit early in the season. We have an online giving platform. We're making some changes to the festival this year. For one thing, instead of being six hours to help the early birds and the, the later people, it's just going to be three hours, six to nine, a little bit more manageable. And we do have a new beneficiary this year. So Brad will tell you a little bit more about that. You will.
No. Thank you again for your support last year. I was just really touched that Amy would even reach out to your local fire department to see if it's something that we would support. So for those of you who aren't familiar, Burning Boat Festival, it's a kind of a long tradition in many communities. And we thought, hey, let's do something different in the city of Des Moines. And so we did a burning boat down at the Des Moines Beach Park. We partnered with Highline Schools, the Maritime Highline School. The kids there actually built the boat for us, which was really nice. The problem was that because we burned the boat at midnight, a lot of the kids actually couldn't stay for the entire event. So this year, we're trying to be a lot more mindful about that. That's why we decided on the new timeframe and actually burning the boat at nine o'clock so that the kids can be there and they can kind of relish in, in their contribution. This year, we did open up a little bit of an application process. And we were excited to select the Highline Schools Foundation. They do a lot of good work for our local youth. And they provide food, sometimes clothing. There's a long list of activities that they actually provide for our students so that they can achieve, you know, the best success possible, right? What I think about, this is just my personal little speech, what I think about with Des Moines is it's family-oriented. It's a real tight-knit community, and it's all about togetherness. And I think events like this really helps, really helps shine what City of Des Moines is all about. I was blown away last year by the attendance. I'm still moved by it. I really hope that you would consider supporting it. And if you're interested in joining us, we do have some vacancies to kind of help fill some roles and help the event be successful next year, this year.
Another thing about our beneficiary this year is that the Highline Schools Foundation is specifically helping children experiencing homelessness in the Highline School District. There are over 1,300 of them. And they supply gas cards. It's, it's, I think they said that it's the highest number in the state. Gas cards, food, shoes, 20 pairs of shoes a month last school year, backpacks, warm clothing, prom, prom clothes. I mean, it's unreal. But the focus is not just on kids in the district, but it's children experiencing homelessness in the district, over 1,300 of them. So that is who we are helping this year.
Mayor. Yeah, Amy and Brad, I just want to say, you know, from having participated last year, heard this as an idea that then grew, just the power of one person's efforts to do the right thing. Thank you.
Councilmember Nutting?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we donate $500 from the Hearts and Minds Foundation to the event.
Second. A second. Any discussion?
Discussion is, is I think that's what that is about. We, we pay into a fund as council members, and I think this is absolutely worthy. So.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, and myself. All those opposed? Councilmember Harris, motion passes 5-1. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Love what you're doing in there.
Mayor, next, we have a presentation from South King Housing and Homeless Partners. And I'm going to ask Claire Goodwin to come up to the podium. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council, members of the public. My name is Claire Goodwin. I'm the executive manager for the South King Housing and Homelessness Partners, or Skip for short. And I'm here tonight to provide a brief update on our housing capital fund process and share a little bit of information about potential project application housed here in the city of Des Moines. So next slide, please. So next slide, please. So Skip was formed in twenty nineteen through an interlocal agreement between several city governments and King County to address the housing needs of South King County as a unified coordinated coalition, and Des Moines was a founding member. Skip currently has eleven member jurisdictions and they're listed on the slide there. Des Moines is represented by Deputy Mayor Buxton on the Skip Executive Board. And by way of background on Skip's Housing Capital Fund, in twenty nineteen, Substitute House Bill fourteen oh six became law, allowing cities and counties to recapture a portion of Washington State sales tax when it's used to support affordable housing initiatives. You may recall that the effective sales tax rate didn't change for the consumer, but instead the tax gets credited against the state sales tax. In twenty twenty-one, eight out of nine Skip member city councils authorized an interlocal agreement with Skip, which allowed the pooling of sales tax receipts received under Substitute House Bill fourteen oh six from each participating member jurisdiction for use by Skip in funding affordable housing projects. Twenty twenty-two was the first of an annual process with Skip and member jurisdictions to fund projects with these pooled resources through the Skip Housing Capital Fund. Two projects were recommended for funding by the Skip Executive Board and approved by the funding member city councils. This approach allows multiple cities to pool their funds for projects across South King County to maximize the creation of affordable housing overall and in each city. And earlier this year, you may recall, um, I was here and the city adopted Resolution twenty-three oh one-two, approving the allocation of forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars in capital funding for those two selected affordable housing projects in our region. Next slide, please. So in terms of the housing capital fund process, the first action we take every year is pooling, is pooling funds with the contributing member cities. And this year, Des Moines contributed thirty-four thousand, three hundred dollars to the twenty twenty-three funding round. And that is one hundred percent of the Substitute House Bill fourteen oh six tax receipts you collected last year. So we have an interlocal agreement in place, um, with our funding cities, including Des Moines. Once we know how much funding is available and the housing capital fund guidelines are adopted by the executive board, we open the application window for projects to apply for funding. So this year, the application period ran from July twenty-fourth to September fifteenth. We hold pre-application meetings with the potential applicants, planning staff and others from the jurisdictions where the project is located and Skip staff. We review the applications and projects with the Skip Advisory Board, who then makes a recommendation to the Skip Executive Board. The executive board then reviews the recommendation and takes action. And last year, the executive board concurred with the advisory board's recommendation. As the last step in the approval process, the funding member councils must take action approving the projects per the requirements of our interlocal agreement. Next slide, please. So pre-application meetings are an essential part of the Skip process and represent an opportunity for Skip and the individual jurisdiction to ensure projects reflect the goals of the local and regional community together. We have held eight pre-application meetings this funding round with a wide variety of projects located throughout South King County. Potential project locations are in Auburn, Burien, Des Moines, Kent, SeaTac and unincorporated King County. The pre-application meeting, uh, we held for the potential project located in Des Moines is a preservation project that seeks to improve twenty affordable apartments, supporting households that earn between thirty-five percent area median income, or A M I, and fifty percent A M I. Victorian Place Two has been owned and operated in Des Moines since nineteen ninety-six. These large apartments are actively serving families and the project sponsors intend to apply to the Skip Housing Capital Fund for five hundred thousand dollars. As part of the Skip preapplication process, we worked with your planning staff to ensure the projects are consistent with your comprehensive plan and any zoning requirements. And since our pre-application meetings are a preliminary step in considering all applicants, I mean, that we have, um, we're anticipating seven applications, uh, this funding round. Um, the asks total eleven million dollars, but we have only six million available. Um, so there's no guarantee that this project will be selected for funding, but wanted to put this on your radar and make sure you were aware. So the Skip Advisory Board and Executive Board will have some tough decisions to make, uh, this year on which projects to fund. And if you're interested in watching the deliberations, um, on which projects get selected for this funding, um, I would encourage you to, um, tune into our public meetings in October and November. Um, and you can find, um, more information on how to do that on our website at W W W dot, uh, S K H H P dot O R G. Next slide, please. So Skip's goal is to bring South King County communities, communities together in collaboration to address our affordable housing challenges. Over the past two years, your financial contributions totaling over eighty-six thousand dollars have been pooled with our other member jurisdictions. And together, we have funded a hundred and nine new units of housing in South King County. Through your continued engagement, we will see even more affordable housing built and preserved in the years to come. So thank you. I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Claire, one, one comment, you know, is appreciate the presentation. And council, I think what's, what's, you know, heartening about this was that when we joined Skip and helped formulate what it was going to be, there was a commitment by the council which continues that we be part of regional solutions for regional problems. And I think that what you exemplify here is that approach. And so it's great to see it come as far as it has. Mayor.
Do we have any questions or quick comments? Councilmember Harris?
Um, so same question I ask every time. Um, how's that inventory coming? You know what I mean?
Yeah, so we, uh, for, for members of the public and others that may not be, um, aware. So, um, as part of the, uh, Department of Commerce's Middle Housing Grant, several of Skip member jurisdictions, um, got together and, uh, funded a, um, affordable housing inventory dashboard that was looking at, um, locating where our, um, naturally occurring affordable housing is throughout, um, the region and where our rent restricted units are as well. Um, so it, it's an internal tool. Um, we have launched it internally, so our planners all have access to that, um, at this, at this time. It's, um, I would, I would suggest, uh, you reach out to your, your planning staff. Yeah, so.
Councilmember Steinmetz?
Yeah, just briefly, can you describe what the criteria is for what projects get funded and what don't? You know, so we have a better sense of how you actually make that decision?
Yes, so there's a variety of factors, uh, that go into play, um, that the advisory board and executive board will consider. And so, and those come from the annual adopted housing capital fund guidelines, um, which the executive board, uh, develops and approves every year. Um, so some of those funding priorities include preservation is one of them, um, homeownership projects, projects demonstrating geographic equity, meaning we want to see projects throughout South King County, not just in one jurisdiction. Um, projects that advance economic opportunity, um, racial equity, projects that support, um, extremely low income households and permanent supportive housing. Um, and there's a, a couple others. We want to see that folks are leveraging other funds, other fund sources, maybe with, uh, through, through private sources or through, um, other public funders. Um, timeliness is important and, um, I think those are the, those are the main ones.
Deputy Mayor Buxton?
I just, uh, want to make a comment that I appreciate this process. It just increases transparency and keeping the city and leadership and our residents in the loop as to how we're, what, what and how we're doing with our funds. So thank you.
And I'd just like to mention, I've really appreciated you working, um, with the city and, uh, respecting our zoning and so forth. That's been beneficial. We, we appreciate when we have partners and you've been a good one. Thank you. Michael, did you have any more?
Yeah, no, thank you. Appreciate it. And Mayor, that concludes the city manager report.
I almost called you grandpa.
I, I knew this was going to happen at some point in the meeting.
It, it's worthy of noting, uh, our city manager became a grandfather this week and, uh, we're all excited for him. All right. Will the city clerk please read the consent agenda or calendar?
Item one, National Recovery Month Proclamation. Item two, surplus, surplus property vehicles. Item three, Redondo Fishing Pier and Restroom Grant Acceptance. Item four, September fourth through eighth, twenty twenty-three as Construction Suicide Prevention Week. And that concludes the consent calendar, Mayor.
Councilmember Nutting?
I move to approve the consent. Calendar is read.
Second? Second. Is there any council member that wishes to pull an item? Councilmember Harris?
Item three, Mayor.
Okay, we'll be voting on the consent agenda on items one, two and four. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Pass unanimous. All right, moving on to item three, the Redondo Fishing Pier and Restroom Grant Acceptance. Mr. Harris, you have the floor.
So, um, uh, I want to keep things moving. I just wanted an opportunity to vote no on, uh, motion three. I do not believe it is, uh, a great idea to strategically to move the fish, the restroom thing across the street. And I am not wild about using the R C O grant money for that. In fact, I think our priorities for the fishing pier should be towards, uh, something else. So, uh, that's it.
Councilmember Nutting?
Uh, I move to authorize the acceptance of the Washington State Department of Commerce twenty twenty-two Local and Community Projects Program Grant in the amount of eight hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars and further authorize the city manager on his, or his designee to sign the twenty twenty-two Local and Community Projects Program Grant contract, contract substantially in the form as submitted.
Second? I have a second from Councilmember Pennington. Any discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes six-zero. Okay? Councilmember Nutting?
I move to approve the acceptance of Washington State Department of Commerce twenty twenty-four Local and Community Projects Program Grant in the amount of nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars and further authorize the city manager or his designee, de-signee to sign the twenty twenty-four Local and Community Projects Program Grant contract substantially in the form submitted.
Second? I have a second from Councilmember Pennington. Any discussion before we take a vote on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes six-zero. Councilmember Nutting?
I move to authorize the acceptance of Recreation and Conservation Office R C O Grant Agreement in the amount of six hundred and eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and three dollars and further authorize the city manager or his designee to sign the R C O Grant Agreement substantially in the form as submitted. And I'd like to make a comment after.
Sure, we need a second. Councilmember Pennington, second. Comments? Councilmember Nutting?
I just think this is the right thing to do. We've, we've, uh, decided to go out to bond for other things and, and to help Redondo and, and the Marina. I just think this is the right thing to do to move this project forward. So, um, I, I, that's why I've made all three motions and that's why I'm supporting this.
Uh, city manager Mathias, you had a comment?
Just a, just a quick comment. Six hundred and eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and three dollars of money, not the city's money, but from the state. And I just want to compliment Andrew for doing such a great job in negotiating this. He went down there, twisted their arms, um, and got the money from the state and he, after very diligent negotiation. So this is a great triumph for, for the city in terms of resources. And Andrew did a great job.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yeah, I, I'm going to support this too. It, this whole project is, is been long in coming. Uh, we've invested in, in the Redondo area. We've invested in the boardwalk. We've gotten a lot of money from, from the state and from grants and, and other project, other programs. So, you know, my hat's off to the, the, uh, city administration for going out and, and, and the staff to find these types of monies so that, that, um, that they can be utilized and we can have other monies to utilize other area, in other areas of the city. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, I was just going to try to keep moving, things moving along, but, um, if this six hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars was actually going towards the fishing pier, um, I'd be all in. Thank you.
Councilmember Steinmetz?
Yeah, I, I mean, this is all part of a bigger project down there at Redondo to take care of the fishing pier in the area immediately around it. I think the idea of being willing to walk away from six hundred eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and three dollars, just because you don't like where the bathroom is going is kind of an absurd position. It's a good position. It's a good thing. Uh, and you don't walk away from the money that doesn't cost us. So I, I'm in favor of this.
Yeah, I'll make a quick comment before we take the vote. Anytime we can get other people's money to do the great work in our city, we go for it. It has an environmental component. The bathrooms are on the water side. In high tides, during storms, the logs are crashing underneath the plumbing and ha, biohazards are flowing into our sound in that regard, or at least the potential to at least do so. It was insane that they put it there when they did back in the seventies, quite honestly. It should be in the parking lot. The new facility will have retail bathrooms and, for us divers, shower. It's going to be a great asset to that community. It's going to be aesthetically pleasing. It's going to bring value to the community. So I am all for it. With that, let's go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting and myself, all opposed. Councilmember Harris, motion passes five-one. All right, I'm going to go ahead. I, uh, apologize. I got things a little bit out of order with the item being pulled. I have two proclamations I, I need to read. Bear with me while I make sure my voice is a little wetter. Proclamation, whereas behavioral health is a central part of health and one's overall wellness. And whereas prevention of mental and our substance use disorders work, works. Treatment is effective and people recover in our area and around the nation. And whereas preventing and overcoming mental and our substance use disorder, disorder is essentially, is essential to achieving healthy life cycles, but lifestyles, but physically and emotionally. And I'm sorry, I, I have to put my glasses on. I'm not reading very well here. Whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and or substance use disorders to implement preventive measures, recognize the signs of a problem and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services. Whereas an estimated four hundred thousand people in King County are affected by these conditions. Now therefore, to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U S Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy and the City of Des Moines invites all residents to participate and proclaim the month of September as National Recovery Month. Sign this day, Mayor Matt Mahoney. The next one, I, I would like to, uh, thank personally for bringing this forward, Councilmember Nutting. He was a advocate and expert in the construction piece and he brings valuable asset to us in that regard as far as planning and, and so forth in the city. Whereas the future of, of the United States construction industry depends on nurturing the development of a safe and healthy environment for the seven million workers employed directly or indirectly by the industry. And whereas death by suicide in the construction industry occurs at a rate approximately four point three times higher than the overall United States average and is ranked as the nation's second highest industry for such deaths. And whereas every construction worker has an expectation and a right to work in a safe and healthy environment where open, honest and thoughtful conversations around the topic of suicide and mental health are encouraged. And whereas research reveals that organizations which have support systems and process to assist employees in seeking and engaging help in times of distress and more durable and resilient and better equipped to provide safe environments and nurturing experience for the employees. And whereas industry leaders, including construction business owners, material providers, trade associations, heavy equipment manufacturers, manufacturers of production facilities, engineering communities, government officials and others must act and encourage open conversations about mental health and suicide awareness within the construction industry. And whereas during the month of February twenty twenty-three, local, regional and national leaders in the construction did initiate the national campaign of promoting awareness of suicide and mental health awareness in their community. Now for the City of Des Moines City Council- Now for the City of Des Moines City Council hereby recognizes September fourth through the eighth, 2023, as Construction Suicide Prevention Week, and asks that respective organizations initiate and/or encourage open conversation relating to suicide and mental health awareness in the construction industry, and engage in responsible activities whose purpose is to strengthen that construction industry to provide optimal environment to encourage construction workers to discuss mental health struggles without fear or repercussions or reprisal. Sign this day, Mayor Matt Mahoney. Hand these to the city clerk with signatures. Thank you. All right. So, we'll be moving on to... Bear with me. New business, and we start with the budget retreat. Michael, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So, typically, this is something we do earlier in the summer, and this year we're doing it a little later in September. I think I'll ask AJ and Jeff to come up. You can maybe sit in the front because they'll each have a part of this. The process of getting to this point, which started probably more or less last June, involved ongoing discussions with all the departments as to the current status of their financial picture, what their needs are for the future, what their hopes for being able to expand their services and quality of services and activities and all of that. And we sit down, Jeff and I essentially, and AJ also helped this year, sit down with each department, walk through their budget, walk through the things they're hoping are potentially different in the 2024 budget. We then compile all of that, and we get some preliminary numbers, preliminary review of what's going on with department heads. And from that, we start identifying revenue sources, fund balance, and the likelihood that we can either expand or do we need to contract any operations. So, tonight is information for council. Tonight, we're not asking for any decisions, one way or the other. There's a number of policy issues that council needs to address as we go forward. At the end of this, we'll show you the next steps, but essentially, we will have public hearings at the end of October and early November to approve the budget, make any amendments council wants. We also, in November, would approve the property tax allocation, amend any budget amendments from 2023. And what we're going to create is the opportunity for city council, before the first public hearing, that they can meet with Jeff if they want to to ask any questions related to the budget for an hour or so, and we'll schedule those as council wants to take advantage of that. I'm legally bound by the second of October, first business day in October, to provide to the city clerk a preliminary budget as per state statute. And from that preliminary budget, we will develop the final budget recommendation from staff that will go to the city council. And from that, you will see that and potentially be able to, you know, you can ask questions in advance of that, and then we can discuss anything you wish. But this is a little different than in the past. We're not going to go through numbers per department, per se. We're going to show you the overall picture, and then we're going to kind of walk through what the challenges are, what some of the recommendations are, and what some of the policy decisions we will need council to make moving forward. So, with that, I want to thank our staff for their involvement in this. Everybody in this room had input into this process and others. We've done away with the old budgeting model of calling all the department heads. The one that complains the least gets cut the most. We don't do that anymore. No, just kidding. But at any rate, so let me start out and kind of walk through, to start with, what the macroeconomic national economy issues that exist. Next slide. Right, so macroeconomics being what's the national picture, and to a large degree, what's the international picture? So, there's consistent inflationary pressure nationally. The Federal Reserve's strategy to essentially reverse quantitative easing. Quantitative easing was a strategy taken during COVID and before COVID even to reduce the interest rates significantly to foster economic activity. And the Fed has now reversed that approach because the economy has demonstrated strength, and the strength has been visible through the inflationary process. So, they're going about increasing the interest rate structure. And simultaneous to that, they want to provide the national economy with a soft landing, which means they want to reduce the hardship and extremity of intended reduction in economic activity. Because the reason that you raise interest rates is to dampen economic activity since cost of funds has gone up, and it makes investment less attractive. So, by slowing down economic activity and reducing demand, the theory has always been that you could lower inflation. But this time, strangely enough, and it's not clear why, labor markets remain robust. And you would think if the economy is lessening in activity, you would have less demand in the labor market, and you could, you know, that would help lower demand, which would help lower inflation. That's not the case this time, so people are kind of mystified by the fact that the economy is still extremely strong, labor market is strong, and interest rates are going up. So, the impacts of that for us are that cost of goods, especially building, construction materials, have increased significantly. So, when we go out to bid and we have a certain number in mind, that number is exceeded by the cost of providing, especially the construction materials for any projects. I think Councilmember Nutting could speak to that. The robust nature of the labor market has not resulted in wage stagnation or even gradual slowing down of wage growth. So, you have a situation where, in some respects, there is lessened economic activity and/or it's more expensive, but wage growth has not subsided. So, in order to stay competitive, and you'll hear quite a bit more about this, we've had to take efforts to retain employees and to attract new employees. And that's the next bullet point. Essentially, recruitment for specific jobs has been competitive. The importance of maintaining, enhancing job retention becomes increasingly important. And one area that's been in decline in activity has been in the housing market, where it is presumed higher interest rates have both condensed those eligible to afford housing costs because you need a certain income to justify rental, like mortgage payments. So, if interest rates go up, those mortgage payments increase, and it reduces the number of people who can qualify for the loans. And it's also made investment in homeownership less attractive because as you pay the mortgage, a higher percentage goes to interest rates rather than to principal. So, let's move on to the microeconomics. So, microeconomics is the local impacts. So, we've been challenged by COVID pandemic and the ongoing recovery process from that contagion. The strategy that the city employed during COVID, which lasted approximately three years, was to attempt to retain our workforce throughout the pandemic in anticipation of the pandemic ending or lessening at some point. And with appropriate staff in place, we could return to normal operations, provision of services and programs to the public without disrupting our labor force that could negatively impact our ability to return to normal. And I think a great example of that was the parks programs this summer. They were very successful. There were few complaints about things. We carried on all the programs because we had the staff in place to do that. But the cost, the benefits to the public and to the community is clear from providing those services. The cost to the city was maintaining those employees through the challenging years of COVID. And you'll see that that relationship is also important in looking at the budget. Okay. So, AJ will talk more in depth about retention and attraction of employees. Same time, revenues in certain areas have not maintained pre-COVID levels yet, so that puts pressure on the city budget. And the retained cost structure, manpower, force, staff, expertise throughout the pandemic. What I was just saying, we retain people. Significantly, inflation grew at high levels. In the city, in order to remain competitive in the workforce and retain current employees with the support of the city council, for which everyone is appreciative, we instituted an 8% cost of living adjustment in 2023, which was higher than most of our competing cities, but which I think spoke well to the appreciation of this city for its staff. What you see today are numerous steps we're taking to assure a balanced budget with reserves consistent with city council policy. Primarily tonight, just to keep in mind, we'll be looking at the general fund and operating funds. We're not talking about capital at this time. That will be later in the month, I believe. The CIP is coming forward, but the capital funds are very strong. The challenge is on the operating side and the general fund. And just to remember that throughout all of this, you know, we, like we said in City Currents, Continuity of Excellence, did receive the Innovation Award for local government for primarily sustainability, but also the manner in which we go about our business and are creative. And also, the use of the ARPA resources helped accomplish that. So, I'm going to go to the next slide. Am I doing this one? Okay, thank you. I've seen these so many times, it's like, okay, point me. All right, so the recovery from COVID has allowed us to look at focusing on three key areas. And those three areas essentially entail the full gamut of services and activities provided by the city. But one we call external operations, public safety, economic development, city infrastructure, community development, marina, emergency management, and those are sort of the external piece. The internal piece, finance, information, technology, human resources, workplace safety, that all are kind of internal services that support our ability to provide services directly to the public. And finally, quality of life, recreation, senior services, events and facilities rentals, which is important and will come up later. And we've also gone about, as we've looked at the budget, assurance that charges incurred are attributed to the appropriate fund. For example, there's a fund called 105, which is the Development Fund. So, charges for permitting and so forth could be allocated to that fund, and that helps pay for some of the staff involved in community development and in public works. So, we've been through that with a fine-tooth comb to make sure that everything that needs to be charged to specific funds is charged. And essentially, what that does over time is relieve the general fund. So, next one. Yeah, so now Jeff, I think, is going to pick this up. Where am I? You are? No, no, I mean, it's fine. Okay. So, this, we really are in us, trust me. No, so what this is, is, you know, when we, if you go back to the dark days when we were facing bankruptcy, we got two findings from the state auditor. And one of the findings was, you're going bankrupt, and you have no plan to get out of it. And the second finding was, and you have no long-term projections as to where you're going to be. So, one of the first things we did to write all of that was we started providing five-year revenue and expenditure projections. This is the general fund. In the past six years, we have always shown you, and it's the ending fund balance that's critical, we've shown you green, okay? This is the first time we've ever had red in showing up in the five-year in what we call the out years, '27 and '28. So, that's part of what we're going to talk about tonight, why we're at this point and how we get out of this, or how we protect ourselves in the long term. Short term, we're fine. You can look at 2024. The budgeted amount shows fund balance of over $5.25 million. The GFO, a Government Finance Officer Association, target of approximately 16.67% of general fund expenditures. Okay, so in 2024, we exceed that. We're at 21.77. Okay, in 2025, and this is not the most recent. That was off, the most recent one was done today at about 5:30, slightly better picture. But 2025, we still have a positive fund balance of two, over $2.5 million, but we're not reaching the 16.67. And as we go further in the out years, the distance between the projected amounts and the required amounts, there's a gap. And so, that's what we need to solve over time, and that's what you'll see in this budget process. But we're not concerned overly about that. There's a number of factors contributing to this. Some of the policy decisions we're going to ask council to weigh in on can help alleviate this situation. But, and we also have, this is 2027, where it starts to become significant concern. 2026, 2027, that gives us two years to help sort this out. But in the near term, we're fine, okay? Next, please. Okay, there you go.
And so, I'm going to talk about basically costs and revenue. So, one of the reasons that we have red on the forecast is our costs are rising. So, we're going to look at a few of those, and then I have a couple of examples that really kind of create the accurate picture. So, as Michael was talking about, labor costs are increasing. We had, like we said, there was an 8% COLA, so the cost of living increases in the area are affecting that. And along with that, health benefits would go up, so, you know, rates can increase. And just, you know, they're also based on salary, so labor costs kind of drive the health benefits costs as well. And the robust labor market favoring employees, so it's an employee's market. So, they've become more expensive, and then your labor costs are, again, in turn, more costly. Construction and cost materials, so for capital projects, the timing is important. I'm sure Andrew Merges can tell you all about the rising construction costs being a factor in those projects. And then also, cost of vehicles are also increasing. Police vehicles are not just getting more expensive, but they're also getting more difficult to procure. Also, we want to point out to technology. So, just as many things in our regular lives where we're pushed onto subscription-based expenditures, we are, the city is in the same position, so Office 365 is in the budget for next year. I did want to point out too that as far as technology, and why this is an issue now is because our IT director, Dale Southwick, has done an excellent job over the years of keeping us off of subscriptions. But because of Microsoft not offering newer perpetual licenses, it kind of, you know, forces us onto it for next year. Okay, one cost that has gone up quite a bit over the last couple of years is our annual service charge from the SCOR jail. As this chart shows, in 2022, which is really, that's last year, it was $612,000. This year, $937,000. Next year, $1,015,000. So, that's almost, you know, nearly double, you know, what it was just last year. Another example, and this one again, I can say almost double. This is our WCI insurance costs. So, last year, $615,000. This year, $814,000. Next year, over $1.1 million. And so, an interesting thing too here is when we received our, you know, letter telling us what the cost would be for next year, their explanation was, well, we've had investments with unrealized losses. They have negative, you know, net position. So, you wonder who's making their investments, if that's the case. But then we also got another communication from them saying that, well, it's really, you know, the legal atmosphere, which makes, you know, making claims much easier than it has in the past, and so therefore, you know, it's more expensive to have the insurance. I don't know, have an opinion really on which one is accurate. Maybe they both are. But that's kind of the communication that we've gotten from the Washington City's Insurance Agency. Okay, now to talk about revenue. We had quite a time trying to come up with a word to describe the revenue. As we've had in our quarter... Um, as we've had in our quarterly reports, you know, our revenue is, um, above budget for this year. It also is, you know, some categories are doing better than last year. But the issue really is, is that revenue is growing slower than, than costs. So if costs are, you know, increasing at a four percent rate and revenues are increasing at a three percent rate, then year after year, the gap between those gets bigger and bigger, which is why you see in the 27 and 28, we've got red and, and it's a much bigger disparity between the revenues and the costs. Specifically, uh, in regards to revenue items, um, that are, are relevant to the discussion is, uh, first of all, ARPA money. So, um, that's on a timeline, we have to have it all obligated by the end of next year, and then it's all done at the end of 2026. Sound transit contract is ending, therefore, um, sound transit, uh, funds that we receive will also end. Um, there's overall lessened activity in the local economy is, you know, part of, that was part of Michael's, uh, discussion about the, the lessened activity. Um, ev-, events and facilities rentals has been one area where, um, we feel the city has potential to maximize revenue, uh, more so than in the past. Um, property tax, um, if costs are going up four or five percent, um, property tax by state law, we can only really increase at one percent. So every year we'd talk about, are we going to take the one percent, you know, or not? Uh, recreation programs, uh, they were successful, but, um, with the participation and, and providing the service to the community, uh, but on the revenue side, it was still, um, not to previous pandemic levels. And then, uh, red light running money, that's another one that we receive, um, but it's still at about 1.2 million per year, and our expectation is pretty much going to stay there, so that's not something that's going to grow, but which is good because that means people have changed their behavior, um, and are driving sa- safely or more safe. Uh, so that's actually something that, you know, it's stable, um, we don't really look for growth in that category. And then organizational structures and challenges, uh, the city has very lean staffing levels, given the work accomplished, uh, for a city of our size. And then, uh, we're also a full-service city, so we don't really have redundancy in staffing. Each position is essential. Uh, other challenges, uh, you know, finance, you gotta have fun sometimes. Spatial constraints, so, uh, we're currently working with the city manager on creative solutions to avoid capital investments in the current, uh, city hall campus, uh, as people are continuing to return to the office, uh, after COVID, uh, we have, uh, the related spatial concerns, uh, in that. And again, uh, vehicle replacement, uh, we're working to align prohibitive cost structure of new cars with available resources of the city. This is EJ's slide.
Good evening, council. Um, one thing I'd like to point out, um, about retention and why we talk about it so much, and it should be pretty obvious, but I just, it's worth being restated, that retention is critical for our ability to maintain workflow and provide the services that the city has come to expect from us, and also to safeguard our investment that we've made in our employees. So as I go through the retention efforts, these are things that we have done and hope to continue to do, and you'll see as part of our 2024 budget request. Clearly, part of retention is making sure that employee to- total compensation is, uh, competitive, that includes both wages and benefits within our comparable job market. Um, and one important note about, when we talk about our comparable job market, um, what Jeff just said in terms of a full-service city, we provide a lot of services that cities of our equal size would not provide. So in some ways, um, when we're out competing for staff, we're competing against the city of Seattle, the city of Tacoma, the city of Federal Way, which other cities of our similar size may not have to compete for staff, um, in certain areas. Uh, career progression opportunities, um, we've been very diligent about trying to create professional development and training opportunities. We are a small agency, and so in order to retain, we're trying to create career growth, um, without necessarily adding redundancy. Um, that goes to speak down to engagement and recognition. We've also are, um, making an investment in organizational tools and equipment. Um, you know, I don't know where, uh, IT director Southwick feels, but one positive to me, um, is that, uh, COVID really identified the fact that we, uh, need to focus on technology. It's vital to all of the services that we provide. We need to continue to provide those tools to our staff so they can be efficient, um, to maximize our efficiency, productivity, and really to assist with overall job satisfaction. And then, of course, the work environment. Um, we've made an emphasis and will continue to make an emphasis on safety initiatives and programs and trying to create a work-life balance for our staff. Next slide.
Um, just on cue, I received a email here that the Seattle Times has an article tonight about soft landing for the Washington economy, um, right on time. So a couple of things that, that we can do. Um, one is to, um, work with SCORE to try to reduce that service charge of a million dollars. Um, the other is retain the one-time sales tax in the general fund for, only for 2024. And I know that's been a concern of council. There were a couple of years during COVID where that money was left in the general fund rather than moved to the one-time sales tax fund. Um, Councilmember Nutting and others have been concerned about that. Currently, there's about a million dollars in the one-time sales tax fund, which is separate from the general fund for capital projects. Well, we're going to request of council, we bring forth the budget, is the ability to take the, the one-time sales tax from 2024 and place it in the general fund, leave it there for that one specific year, um, to help support fund balance over time. And then in 2025, we'll go back to being, um, that money going back into capital projects. But I think, to the degree there's a million dollars in there already, which should safeguard some of the capital that we, um, would intend using, um, that will be a request that we will make. Property tax, we anticipate, um, taking the one percent that was banked during COVID, where we did not charge, charge that and using that, um, putting that in the general fund, repurpose available ARPA funds, so we'll come to council with those recommendations, and continue to seek efficiencies in organizational structure. Excellent. So these are the, kind of the policy decisions that we will be asking you to make, and they're not for tonight, but they're, um, in the future as we review the budget. So one thing that we're looking at is taking the events and facilities rentals and creating a new enterprise fund. Enterprise funds are characterized by the fact that their revenues have to meet their expenditures. And so as with most, um, enterprise funds, there's a period of time of, of gestation where, um, it takes a while to get the revenues up. So what we would do is, um, borrow against one of the other very flush funds in the city, um, to start this out. And what it does is, I think it's going to increase motivation for success in utilizing our events and facilities. And I've been convinced ever since I came to the city of Des Moines, that we are not maximizing the value of our events and facilities and opportunities. Weddings, events, all of that, I think that we do a good job. I think we could do, I think we could be more efficient and effective in doing that. So this would provide an opportunity to review very carefully all expenditures and all revenues associated with events, um, through creating a new fund. It would reveal the true cost, it aligns the cost and rates with the market, maximize revenue, and then of the three positions currently designated for events and facilities, this would relieve the general fund of those costs. So it's kind of a winner across the board. We're going to finish the presentation for questions. Sorry, okay. Next, so that will be a, the policy decision for council. Okay, repurposing ARPA, um, once again, a policy decision. There's, that's the, um, current money that's available in ARPA. We, we would recommend putting that into the general fund and having that basically, um, balance out against fund balance. Those are unspent funds right now. Next. Um, next steps, as I described, uh, we provide preliminary budget clerk on October 2nd. Between the 12th and the 18th, um, city council may schedule a time with the finance director regarding any budget questions. So, um, that, and just as a resource. And, uh, our chief administrative officer, Vani, will, um, schedule those. October 26th, first public hearing on the 2024 recommended budget. And, uh, November 9th, the second public hearing, and that also, as I mentioned, includes property tax, budget amendments, um, and, uh, which, yeah, and that's it, and then the, the actual 2024 second reading of the budget. And, next. That concludes our presentation. So take any questions?
Really quick, one, one, also, one addition to that is, uh, our citizens advisory committee is also part of the ordinance is to review the budget, and they will get that opportunity on November 1st. You were, Councilmember Nutting, you have the floor first.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Um, my, my only question is, is in creating another, um, enterprise fund, um, for the events, um, facilities and that kind of stuff, um, would it be much like the marina where, um, that enterprise fund would have to pay for the upkeep of those facilities? So let's just say the beach park is part of those rental facilities, right? And, and there's a couple of projects that need to be done down there to siding, paint, and that kind of thing for, um, the municipal facility side of things. Um, so is, is this a point where you can elaborate on that, or would that be for the next meeting?
No, I think, uh, that's a very fair question. And I think one of the, the goals here is trying to allocate what's appropriate to what function, right? So we would want to review that. We, we haven't done a lot of research on this because we wanted to bring it to council, and if, you know, there were six of you that stood up and said, absolutely not, we wouldn't have spent the time doing the research, but we'd be happy to do that and bring it back to you as part of the whole budget recommendation process.
I, I think it's fair, if we're, if we're going to move that, um, that, those funds out of the general fund or, or out of the budget and set up a, um, an enterprise fund, um, I, I think we, I think it'd be good that we know if it's, you know, if we're expecting it to pay for itself, that it's going to pay for its facilities as well.
And the other, the other part of it is, along those lines, is that when city sta- when other departments contribute to successful events or cleanup or whatever it is, policing or all of that, we would like to be in a position where they could be charged back against the enterprise fund for their portion of the engagement, you know?
Absolutely agreed, so, all right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll go with Councilmember Harris, then Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Tagging on to Councilmember Nutting, um, I guess my first reaction to the enterprise fund thing is that they're just beyond the clarity and accounting, um, I'm thinking in terms of like, basically delegation of tasks. There, there seems, it would seem to me like there would be, there's just a lot of cross-pollination between the events and what happens at the marina and stuff at the park, and, um, how would you keep, how would you keep that s- stuff separated and, um, and have the, you know, and basically say, I need staff from the marina to do, to help me with this, or, um, I don't know. I, I'm sure you've thought about that, but any comment in that regard?
No, it, okay, so, so currently, all that intercoop-, interdisciplinary cooperation between departments takes place when we have events. That's, that's already kind of a function. I think that one thing we count on is how, um, you know, strongly, uh, our department heads protect their budget. So if they feel that it's somebody else's cost, uh, they're not shy in expressing that. Um, but I think what we're trying to get to is, you know, an understanding of the true cost of things, and we also want to compete in the market. So what we want to do is rationalize both the revenue side and the expenditure side, and what you're describing would be an essential component of that, but I think it's something to some degree we already do.
It, it's a fair, uh, yeah, it's a fair point. Um, one other quick thing is, I, and I may have been, you know, zoned out, but, um, do we have an explanation for why SCORE, the fees have gone up so dramatically?
Um, we do, and, um, if, if it's okay with the council, we will, uh, take steps to try and mitigate the impacts on us. Um, but one of the things with SCORE that's, that's hard for them is, you know, they have four modules that they utilize, uh, for incarceration. And each of those modules holds a certain number of prisoners. The, um, when they get to the point, so, well, during COVID, their average daily beds dropped significantly, and some of those modules were not employed, as I understand, were not employed, um, and they didn't have to have the guards on duty, and they didn't have to have all the support services and all of that. But as they've gone out of COVID, now if they have a module that maybe has 170 prisoners, and the overflow from the first two that have been open, say this is the third one, okay, say that they have 20 prisoners, but they need to staff that module completely. So it has to have the same number of, um, security officers, same amount of access to special services as needed, emergency services, all of that. And so there's a disproportionality in what their cost structure has been and what their revenue structure, but they're slowly getting back to. But I think that's part of, part of that answer, but, um, I think with, uh, council's approval, we will, uh, communicate to, to SCORE that we need some relief in that regard.
I believe you have consensus on that direction.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Thank you, mayor. Two questions, uh, in regard to the enterprise fund for events, is that strictly tied to capital, or would that involve events that aren't tied to a building or a piece of ground? I'm, um, thing, the only thing that comes in my mind right now is something like the parade or, or other kind of community events, like maybe we don't partner with DDM, but we put something on that isn't tied to a specific location. Does it always have to be tied to a location?
I think in the, it, you know, there would, in all likelihood, there'd be some covenant defining what that fund does.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that what that fund does is, is address events and facilities, so it's both of those. It could be facilities, could be associated with one, could not. Typically, everything, pretty much everything would be associated with some facility that was city-owned. We use the beach park for concerts, you've, that's a city-owned property, I mean, I'm not quite sure what the distinction would look like, but we would try to define precisely what their role, what that role of that fund is.
Okay. Uh, then the other question is in regard to public safety, so there is a little bit of concern, there, there was a big emphasis in regard to our ARPA funds, and it hasn't really been addressed yet, um, in regard to how do we cover those positions that we allocate funds for, and I, and the deadline continues to come closer and closer, so I'm wondering if that somehow can be either addressed in our, um, projections or, uh, maybe a plan to make those positions permanent somehow.
Yeah, I think that the, the answer to that question, because we have, there are several years here that we have to plan for this. And I think that the timing of, um, and, and I think his performance to date has been exceptional, but our new police chief, um, I'm putting, I'm putting this on you, man. No, um, that was just a setup. No, seriously, I think what we're, what we anticipate doing with that is having the, the chief, um, do a very comprehensive review, which he's currently in the process of, to identify manpower needs and the allocation of officers and, and responsibilities. And from that, we will determine what the value of those positions is. Should we, should the focus be to retain them? Should the focus be some other, um, you know, kind of operational capacity in the police department? But that's something he's working on currently. We do have a recommendation, we will have a recommendation, um, for one new position in police that we worked with the, the chief, and I appreciated when we did the, the police, uh, budget review, um, it was before the date that he started, and he came to that, and- It was before the date that he started, and he came to that and participated in it. So we're, we're hoping that the chief is the one to come forward with some recommendations, I would say, in the next three to six months as to what makes sense from his view operationally.
That's all I have right now, thank you.
I want to go to Councilmember Steinmetz and I see you, Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, I just, I, I want to kind of echo a lot of the concerns that have been raised about, uh, taking, um, the facilities into an enterprise fund. And if I, if I heard you correctly, and I'm not sure, I'm not totally sure that I did, you were talking about borrowing from more robust funds to kind of get it launched? Did I misunderstand that?
No, not at all. For example, the, the example is our swim fund has about nine million dollars in cash. So what we would anticipate doing is probably half a million, borrow from swim, pay it back in three years, three percent interest. So they're made whole, but it starts out the Events and Facilities Fund. What that does, if we can increase our revenue structure, we're taking three positions o- out of the general fund and putting it in a place of self-sufficiency. So that's, that's the value of doing it. Well, that and the fact that maybe we'll have, be more successful. And I'm not saying we aren't successful now, but I think we can maximize some opportunities. Some of the new facilities that we have, um, Soundview Park and others, um, take advantage of that. So that would be the strategy. There's nothing in the, that we're aware in the RCWs or state auditor that prevents us from doing that.
Yeah, I think, I think one thing that would be really, really helpful to, to more fully understand how this is going to work is to have the, the equivalent of sort of a business plan for that fund so that we can see over, you know, the next five years, what's the revenue potential, what are the expenditures expected to be? When are they going to match up? When do they, the, you know, when does it go? Because launching any kind of a business, and an enterprise fund is essentially operating as a business, you know, it takes capital to get it up and get going, even if you've got something started. And so I think all of us would really benefit from seeing when do the lines cross and...
I think that's a great idea, appreciate that. And we'll bring that forward as part of the discussion.
Uh, and then, secondly, as far as SCORE is concerned, I, you know, I do think that probably SCORE has increased their capacity, not in their capacity, their, um, what are they called, inmate days? If you look into it, because as we came out of the pandemic, more people came out of their houses. And that necessarily led to some, more people getting arrested and being, being housed at SCORE. It would be good to know what that looks like in Des Moines and how much more we're accessing SCORE than we were a couple of years ago and maybe start to look at that. Now, we certainly don't want to get into the catch and release situation that King County got itself into. But that's one of the things that I think we can look at to try to figure out, how do we do that? So for example, if there are, uh, people that get arrested in Des Moines who are going to get booked and released, can we do the booking here locally rather than taking them, uh, to the jail with, that, that's going to count, you know, as part of our act, use of the jail? So it's just one idea that I wanted to throw out there that I think we can probably access pretty...
Appreciate that, but I, I want you to know that, um, we have made very, very determined efforts in the last six years with SCORE to reduce our average daily bed. And we're down to now seven point five. That's every, average daily bed, but our costs are a million dollars, which starts to make it, uh, unbelievably expensive. So, but, but we kept, we've kept track of at least in terms of the usage of the jail. We've also done some things to try to enhance revenue for them. But, yeah, but your point's well taken. I mean, we've also looked at some things which I don't want to really go into at the moment in terms of how we could reduce costs associated with SCORE.
Great, and then...
Something offline, maybe we could talk more about.
Sure, that'd be great. The, the other thing that would be helpful is cost of SCORE as comparison to King County, which is, you know, generally the alternative for, for housing people and what's the average bed cost there.
Yeah, I, and one thing I need to say, because, I mean, I'm, I am on the admin board for SCORE, so policy group. But, I mean, SCORE is really a phenomenal facility. And, um, just in terms of providing mental health and addiction and just healthcare in general, they do a great job. Problem is that the costs are accelerating beyond kind of what our capacity to keep up with that or our desire to keep up with that. But, you know, the, it's all, those are all good points you're making.
Right, thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Getting back to the enterprise fund thing, I'm trying to wrap my mind around that as distinct from the waterfront zone. And maybe I'm conflating, um, but, um, yeah, how do you see them as being distinct things just from an account, an accounting standpoint?
I think I can, I think I can answer this one. Uh, so the Redondo Zone and the waterfront zone, those funds exist to keep them separate from the Marina because basically the state auditors, I think, when they were originated, we have, the, the general fund cannot, sorry, the Marina cannot support the general fund. So those areas being non-Marina, that falls under the general fund. And so then back to your original question on how we would keep track of that and keep them separate is, um, the example I've had is if a Marina employee walks out of the parking lot, does some work, they're, they keep track of that time, and that time goes through payroll and is, is billed or posted to the correct fund. So with the event, uh, and facilities rental, that's not the Marina and it's not the general fund. But let's say a Marina employee goes over and does something for events, well, that would be recorded and that would go through the payroll system and that would post in the correct place. So accounting-wise, I mean, we, it's just matching your revenues and your expenses and making sure that they're categorized properly. So I, does that answer your question or?
Well, I guess I'm thinking of the, this enterprise fund as somehow mapping onto the waterfront zone in the sense that it's the same kind of geography, right? Or, or no?
Yeah, I guess you'd have to.
Jeff, let me, okay, you know, I mean, currently, yeah, we use the, the, you know, be at the parking lot for events, and those events generate revenue. And that's accounted for either through the general fund or else it's paid back to the Marina depending on the event, how that's all set up. So, I mean, those, that dynamic already exists. What we're saying is we're going to make it specific so we can observe it more carefully.
So, uh, and getting back to SCORE, I, I seem to recall something about, um, because they were not anywhere near capacity, and they do have a great deal of expertise in drug rehab and so on, somehow monetizing their expertise in that regard. Is there any kind of potential in, in, you know, moving forward?
You know, I think one way to look at this is, you know, I'm not, I'm not in any way suggesting a critique of SCORE. I think they do a great job. I think they've tried to maximize their revenues to the degree they are able. I think that the anomaly of us being a host city and an owner city make it somewhat difficult at times. And I'm not quite exactly sure what the, what the direct components of this increase are. I've been in touch with Devin over, the director over there. But, you know, that's, you know, I don't really think that there's anything SCORE has done wrong. It's just that the allocation came out in our situation, um, in a challenging way that we'd like to fix.
Well, and I don't think I suggested that they had done anything wrong. I'm just saying they have a, you know, they have some empty capacity that, uh, and they have a great deal of expertise, um, in dealing with people with, um, you know, drug problems. And, uh, that was something that they talked about a couple of years ago. So just, just asking, thank you.
Councilmember Pennington.
Thank you, Mayor. While we're on the subject of SCORE, the, didn't a couple of years ago or maybe a little more, there was some, uh, work at the state to help offset some of the costs with SCORE? Is there an op, another opportunity to, uh, to maybe go back to that here in the next legislative session and see if there's some, some opportunities for, for, you know, because I think we all supported that legislation for SCORE, all the different cities. And it was helpful then, and perhaps there's an opportunity there?
Yeah, I, I think so. I think one thing, um, is that, that SCORE, I am aware that what they've done is developed a very healthy reserve. So it may be that there's a way to draw down that reserve somewhat and, and help us be successful in our relationship with SCORE. But you're right, and, and we have, you know, I know Anthony has been involved with some legislative activity to try to increase Department of Corrections, the average daily bed, all of that, they've done, they've been very active in trying to recruit new cities with contracts to SCORE. So this kind of an anomaly, it's unfortunate, it's us, I'd rather another city have this, be having this discussion, but...
Right, and, and so anyway, and then in, in terms of, um, kind of to maybe address Councilmember Harris's thought, is, you know, they've got, you know, I, I think what you were saying is they have extra space, they should utilize that extra space with, um, and, and bring other folks in there. But, you know, as someone who worked in, in providing service, it, it takes, you know, it, it costs a lot of money to provide a, a, that service. So if they want to utilize the space, we've got to, we've got to hire people, and there, and there's a whole host of things. And, and, you know, a couple of folks for, you know, however many there are, I mean, it's, it's probably a, I won't even guess because I don't know what their, their, their cost structure in terms of wages and benefits is, but it's, it's a lot of money. It's a tremendous amount of money to do that twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. But, you know, maybe there's an offset there as well. In, in terms of the enterprise fund, I think, um, I, I really will support that. I'd like to see that, like to see what that looks like. I think there's, there's opportunities here in that, um, we certainly have seen with the Marina over, over the years and, and, you know, being able to, to provide the services that they do. I think there's an opportunity to do that. We've got a, we, we have and we will, we will in the future have a tremendous waterfront with the, the, the development that's going to happen down there. So I think there's a, a really a, a great opportunity now to, to look at how we can leverage that and how we can move forward with, um, with, with making that a sustainable type of thing. And, and so I, thank you for doing that. I, I think that's, I, I really am interested in how that's going to work. And, and in terms of, of our twenty-six, twenty-seven budget, I, you know, I, I agree with Councilmember Nutting, and we were all a part of that group back in the day of, of the oversight and, and the diligence of, of the, the finances. And, and we made some specific policy decisions about that. And, and I, I think, at least from my perspective and being a part of that, there's, there's latitude in that policy decision in that it doesn't become the norm. And what got us to that is it became the norm of, of always taking these, is it my thing that's causing the echo? Yeah, so, um, is that better? Not much better, little better. I could turn it off and just speak, but, um, anyway, so the, the, what, what happened is, is just a, a little bit of history, is that there was this, this accepted practice of, of, of taking these one-time monies and plugging them into, into ongoing expenses. And, and, and it, and it, you know, that's okay on occasion. Like what we just went through with COVID and, and the council made that, that change, that's okay on occasion, but to have that as a general practice is not okay. And, and, but what that did a number of years ago is it set us up with the ability that when we, we, we have a financial situation that we can, um, we can work our way through it and, and we can use the resources available that we're, that, 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 um, we're put into these reserves so that we can use them in the future for when we have a, an, an incident or a problem that we, that we need to provide some financial support to. And, and so I think that it's an appropriate use, and, and I, I will support that. And, and as you know, and we've had different conversations, I'm, I'm, I'm not supporting frivolous spending and the, and the shell game that went on, you know, prior to, to you becoming the city manager. And, and so in, in that regard, I, I, I would, you know, support looking at that and, and support that as a, as a means to help the city in the future, again, of what we've done in the past to help us to where we got through COVID and so on and so forth. So, um, I think that's really all I have right now, thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Well, I, it, it might be helpful, um, in our, since we have this swim reserve, do we have sort of a, a schedule now of projects and kind of where we're at on the timeline? I, I seem to recall a vote a couple of years ago where we put off some projects in order to, um, reduce rate increases to give people a break during COVID. And I just, before we start borrowing that money, it, it would be kind of good to know where we're at timeline-wise. Thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Harris, I mean, basically, as Andrew so clearly explained to me, that the swim funds are designated for specific projects and that determines what the rate payer structure is. This is, this is, um, available capital that I would assume is designated at some point for projects, but they would not be in the timeframe of this three-year window. So they could, money could be repaid and it would have no effect on projects or anything. But this is not kind of an invitation to reopen swim and reallocate anything. That's done through a very formal process with consultants that help determine the rate that will be the result of the projects that identify the swim needs to accomplish. Some of those are related to NPDS and other things. So, um, I don't know if that answers your question, I think that's the situation.
I'll, I'll finish up with my comments. You know, I think budgets always require hard choices and hard decisions. I thought, uh, you guys did a great budget practice, and that's where you are conservative on the revenues. In fact, I think we'll do better than your estimates, but I appreciate the fact that you gave, you lowballed that. But you also, um, projected what I'll call realistic costs on the expenses. And that puts us in what I think is more looking at what the worst-case scenario will and will be for. As far as SCORE, I'm all for any, any reductions, anything you can do. Please continue to work with Devin on that. One of the things we always get criticized for on council is we always are required to look at the highest and best use of everything. And in regard to the enterprise fund, you know, show us what, what you're thinking. I'm, I'm very interested in the details. I thought, uh, Councilmember Steinmetz made a great recommendation as I, as you complimented him for that. Uh, I'm, I'm very interested in what the police chief's assessment's going to be over the next three to six months. No pressure, man, you know? But, uh, I agree, you know, public safety is a very important component, component of this community. I look at, uh, you know, getting back to the enterprise fund really quick, it, it's, it's a requirement that we be, we look at the fiscally thing, but also, you know, I just ask that you take a, a flavor of looking at the, uh, the community as well and what those events mean and, and what, what's going to translate as we work together there. And the only other one is, is I still believe, um, the passenger ferry is a great asset to the city. I think it's an economic driver, and I definitely would love to see a way that maybe we, we make, we make that work in the community. I think it's, it's that. So obviously, I'm excited to see, uh, when the budget's turned over for us to review and see the results and obviously have more questions as we move into the readings. All right, so I'm sure that concludes what you had for us, all right?
Thank you.
We'll move on, we'll move on to introduction of items for future consideration. This is a time for the sole purpose of proposing new business items that have not previously been before the council for discussion on a future agenda. This is not a time for questions about old business. Councilmembers can submit questions or seek updates on previously discussed business to the city manager at any time. Do any councilmembers have any new business they would like to propose? Seeing none, we'll move on to board and committee reports. Councilmember Harris, we're going to start with you today.
Thank you. Let's see, a, a couple of things. I was not asked, but I would not have supported the, uh, motion to talk about the, uh, early learning center, uh, basically discount. Because it is not, I think it would be good to research the idea, but not have a proposal because it's... idea but not have a proposal because it's basically, it's a discount to developers. It's not a guarantee of lower rates to parents. If it was along those lines, I would have been a little more interested. Um, and, uh, let's see here. Um, and, you know, regarding the bathrooms and Redondo and everything, I just want to remind people that we used to have a full-service marina at Redondo, okay? So, you know, plumbers, engineers and stuff, um, you know, they can figure that stuff out. Um, anyway, I attended a private, you know, candidate forum in one area, uh, this week and can't tell you where, can't tell you what, but, um, I would just thank them and tell them that, um, basically the things that you're, if you're unhappy about one issue, the city handles everything exactly the same way. It's not like, you know, one thing is an outlier and the other 91% of stuff are whatever. Um, senior advisory committee, which I'm sure the deputy mayor will talk about, um, was a great thing. And, um, what I really like is the idea that they're talking about in, you know, trying to get, there is so much talent and mentorship available at, uh, places like Wesley and Judson. And it always, I make the analogy of like eBay where, um, it's just a question of hooking up the buyers and the sellers, um, students who want to learn how to do certain things, and it's, it's surprisingly hard to connect them, uh, with our, you know, senior community that has all of this experience and expertise. And the fact that they talked openly, you know, directly about how do we do that just made me, um, so happy. Um, and, uh, one last thing, oh yeah, uh, I, uh, my little group, Sea-Tac Noise, um, we did our first, uh, dry run of our movie about the history of Sea-Tac Airport. Um, and thank you to the Federal Way Historic Society for, uh, hosting that. And, um, it, uh, it went surprisingly well. Um, thank you.
Councilmember Pennington.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first off, thank you everybody for attending this evening and, and staying. A lot of times people kind of, kind of split after the first little bit. So, thank you. It, it's, it's great to have you here. It's great to hear your comments and for you to have your direct influence on your local government. That's important. Um, thank you to staff for this evening's presentation. A lot of information there. And I have to tell you, this is probably one of the first times, um, that, that I've been excited to, to hear the content of a, of a budget, um, you know, the, the, well, you laugh, but, you know, so often it, it's, you know, even though we have, there's some challenges here, but there were suggestions of, of great solutions and great ideas. And, and it isn't, hasn't always been like that. It's, a lot of times it's just, you know, doom and gloom and, and, you know, you dread showing up and listening to it because it's, it's, you know, it, it's tough. And, and you gotta, but the, I'm telling you, this evening, I, I was really pleased to, to sit through the presentation and the information that was shared and provided and the challenges that were there and, and the potential solutions. And I really look forward to the next meeting where we can, we can explore those a little more. So that's it. Thank you.
Moving on to Councilmember Steinmetz.
Uh, thank you. Uh, you know, obviously you heard from me about the franchise, the ad hoc franchise, uh, committee. Uh, and, you know, that was interesting to sit in and get a little better understanding of how solid waste works. Uh, boy, there's a lot there. Um, secondly is the, um, Saturday morning, there'll be, uh, a yoga class, uh, at Soundview Park. I think it's 10 o'clock. Um, if anybody's interested, I'll be there. Um, and, um, you know, it's a, it's a really great location to do yoga. It's a fairly easy class. It's not difficult. Uh, and you can get a nice little introduction to it. Um, and then, uh, lastly, I just wanted to share with everybody that I'm going to be out of town for a couple of weeks, out of the country actually, um, you know? So my oldest son is staying behind and he'll be watching the house. Uh, but my youngest son is in Seoul, Korea, uh, doing his last semester of college abroad. And so we're going to go visit him. And so I'm looking forward to that. Unfortunately, I'll miss, uh, next week's meeting. Uh, and then I don't believe we're going to have a, a meeting immediately after that. So I'll only miss one, but, uh, just wanted to let everybody know. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Renetti.
Uh, yeah, you heard my remarks, um, as the chair of the environment committee and, and Tyler's remarks. And the only other thing I can say is, uh, to remind everybody that , uh, school is back in session, so mind, be mindful of the littles walking around. Um, they're out there having a good time, 20 miles an hour in, in school zones and, uh, just watch out for the kids. That's all I have to say. Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks for wearing that polo on my behalf. Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I, since we met last, I thoroughly enjoyed my community. Appreciate it. I'm enjoying it tonight and, and I echo my colleagues' comments. Thanks for being here and sitting through the meeting. I appreciate that. Um, I attended a community picnic, oh, uh, up in Zenith. Really appreciate the ability to interact with the residents up there. Uh, Councilmember, uh, Harris talked about our senior services advisory committee is taking the show on the road, so to speak. So instead of just meeting somewhere here in one of the city buildings, we are taking our committee over the next several months when we meet to different locations and inviting our community to join in and have some Q and A and to hear about what we're doing and to have a little bit more involvement. I think that's a, it's going to be a fun process. So I appreciate the creativity of our staff here, Nicole kind of hosting and of course our chair, Jeff Crump. So, uh, Farmer's Market, there's only a couple more left until it, uh, takes a furlough for the winter. And our last day is September 30th. Hope to see you down there. Uh, in regard to the budget tonight, appreciated the, the comments, the presentation. I'm looking forward to creative solutions. You know, the, the challenges up ahead, um, they're not too intimidating. We've got some pretty creative people on staff and even sitting up here. So I think between, uh, our meetings coming forward, I think there's going to be some, some good things to look forward to. Uh, and I also appreciate that what I'm hearing too is that we continue to invest in the economic health of this, of this city, not just let's make everything line up on a page, but the interest is the people, quality of life, programs, parks, creating a place where people want to live, work and play, and an invitation for people to invest in Des Moines. And I, that's, that's what we're all about up here is creating a place to, a wonderful place to live, work and play. And, uh, so with that, a little segue to thank one of our businesses in town in closing. Um, if you've had a chance to drive around Marineview Drive, uh, Edward Jones, those guys down there have done an amazing job of decorating and making that place just be a, a quality place to look at when you drive by and to pull in when you park. It's, it's a beautiful like facade and decor that they've done. And I think it's a, it's an encouragement to all of us to, to provide something like that for the community. And want to say hi to my boys, Wyatt and Luke. I think they're watching tonight. So look at that. We've got some millennials watching tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Buxton. Uh, I, uh, attended a lot of different things, but I, one of the things, I went to the Mount Rainier football game last week on Friday. It was a valiant effort. They were up, they scored 13 points at half. It was 13-7 and third quarter was 13-13. And with one second left, they blocked a kick. The problem was is one of them were offsides, so they ran that sweep play that kind of beat us all night in the second half and they lost 19-13. But Coach Mack has a young team there and, uh, and he was looking for the opportunity to have some learnings from that. Uh, both teams will be playing away. Uh, Federal, Federal Way will be at Lake Stevens on Saturday and, and of course, Mount Rainier will be playing at Dehoma on Friday. So I'm looking forward to their next home game and achievement. In the meantime, I'm going to try to, I already attended a volleyball game for the girls volleyball. I promised all of the sports I would attend some of theirs once. So now next week on Thursday, I'll be going to the soccer game. Uh, anyway, there's a little bit of a question I have of whether it's going to be at the high school or Highline Stadium. So I'm getting that information. I wanted to provide it. Uh, one thing I wanted to mention is on September 23rd, international coastal cleanup is traditionally on the 16th of September. It's the third Saturday of any month. Uh, we looked at the tide tables and we decided September 23rd was going to be a little more friendly, so we weren't dragged out to sea and have to be rescued. Uh, Councilmember Nutting has been diving. He dove with me last Saturday and we plan on being there, uh, to one dive and also to assist. Uh, for those of you from the public, I recommend you go to that Farmer's Market. It is very interesting with what we pull out of there. We found phones, guns, crab traps, uh, electric bikes. Oh yeah, urns. Uh, you would, you would be surprised what we pull out, but it's fascinating critters and creatures and, uh, things like that. But there, there's also the ability for, uh, our residents on the shore side to be able to do some trash pickup along the marina and through town as well. And it all works for the greater good of cleaning up, um, our, uh, our coast. So I, I invite you to be there. With that, our next meeting will be a regular city council meeting on September 28th. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
And I got a second. All those in favor? Unanimous? All right. Everybody have a safe weekend.